...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Now it's time for Citizens Forum, time for citizens to come before the Commission to discuss a topic that is not on the official agenda. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address the Commission? Seeing none, we have no awards or proclamations, no public hearings, so we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of March 2nd, 2009. Item 6.2. Resolution number 09-6600, authorizing a concession agreement with Ray Ray's LLC for the East Crawford Recreation Area. Item 6.3, resolution number 09-6602, authorizing an agreement for workers' compensation, third-party administer services with C.C. MSI Incorporated. Item 6.4, resolution number 09-6604, initiating proceedings for the construction of an aquatic center.
Moving on, approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0. On to development business.
Item 7.1, first reading ordinance number 09-10489, annexing a 7.26 acre tract of land into the corporate limits.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The reason that these applications are broken up the way they are is that each of the parcels is owned separately under a separate deed and they could all be annexed or not annexed based on their own merits. But what we've tried to do is we've had some discussion about the city's policy preference for contiguous growth or have the city grow out from its existing boundaries. And we had received a request to annex the Landmark Development property that is on the east side of Holmes Road. That'd be the city's first stretch across Holmes Road. And there had been discussions out there previously with owners and the Planning Commission agreed to put off consideration of that. So we had some discussions with the intervening owners who were Todd Welsh and First Christian Church. So this first item, applications before you is for a 7.26 acre tract of land. It's east of Presbyterian Manor and just north of the existing Pheasant Ridge subdivision. And we do have a conceptual layout there for it. This is what Mr. Welsh would like to do with the property. And the way that this property interrelates with the other properties is that the city's water system in Brookwood ends at the edge of this property and then it also ends down on East Crawford. And so the developers of Landmark Development would need cooperation from Mr. Welsh and the First Christian Church to be able to extend a street or utility easements any farther east to get over to Holmes Road. The other side of that, and it's difficult to see on your maps, but there is a sewer pump station in there that is undersized and designed to be disposable. And if this subdivision went in, that sewer pump station would be removed and the sewage discharge from the church and these subdivision areas would go north up to Brookwood and then east down Brookwood, all the way over to the interceptor that's shown in this photo. So Mr. Welsh and the church really need assistance from Mr. Dent, Landmark Development, to get easements and pipeline to get access to the interceptor. Mr. Dent needs assistance from Mr. Welsh and the church to get water extended to the east. So this first item comes before you with a recommendation to annex this 7.26 acres in initially agricultural as a holding zone and then Mr. Welsh has recently filed applications to rezone and plat this property in a fashion similar to what you see in the picture there. But again, from a standpoint of phasing or timing, it's actually easier for him, or will be, to develop along Holmes Road first because it's closer to the sewer. So he would envision developing this as his phase two and not his phase one. With that, I'd be open to any questions.
Questions of staff. It's really nice when everyone gets along, isn't it?
Had good cooperation in this area.
Very good. Any public comment? I'll bring it back to the Commission.
We approve ordinance 09-10489, annexing a 7.26 acre tract of land into the corporate limits located north of Pheasant Ridge Edition and east of Presbyterian Manor.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve on first reading ordinance number 09-10489, annexing seven acre tract of land into the corporate limits of Salina. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0.
Item 7.2, first reading ordinance number 09-10490, annexing a 10.97 acre tract of land into the corporate limits.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is the second piece of property purchased by Todd Welsh from the Lundberg Trust. It's physically separated from the other parcel by a strip of land owned by First Christian Church. I think you'll see varied references, which we will get pinned down, as to whether this has 10.97 or 9.97 acres. I don't know how much Mr. Welsh paid for, but his survey says 10.97 acres, but his deed says 9.97. So we'll figure out how much is actually in there through the platting process. But the same reasoning applies here. He's applying to annex this property to plan for future residential and hoped for neighborhood commercial development down at the corner there of Holmes and Crawford. And he's looking at single-family development for the rest of it. Again, it would be zoned for now agricultural, but he has come forward with applications to plat this property and rezone it appropriately, which will be heard by the Planning Commission in April. So this comes to you with the recommendation to incorporate this land into the city limits of the city.
Questions of staff. Any public comment? I'll bring it back to the Commission.
Mayor, I move that ordinance number 09-10490 concerning the annexation of approximately 10 acres of land into the city at the corner of Holmes and Crawford be approved on first reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 09-10490 on first reading, annexing approximately 10 acres of land into the corporate limits of Salina. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0.
Item 7.3, first reading ordinance number 09-10491, annexing a 9.23 acre tract of land into the corporate limits. Item 7.3A, resolution number 09-6603, expressing the intent to defer the payment of special assessments.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you. This is also a voluntary request for annexation. The church was a little more reluctant and they said they were conditioning their agreement to be annexed on a request to receive an agricultural deferral on their 9.23 acre holdings. And staff indicated to them that we could make no commitment to them, but we would carry the request through the process and it's ultimately a policy decision for the City Commission to make. The desire here was to make a contiguous piece of property all the way out to Holmes Road. The church has no plans at this time to plat or develop their property and do not wish to be assessed for street extensions or utility extensions at this time, although they would be willing to grant easements to allow that to happen. So what the ag deferral would mean is that if there were a benefit district created for Brookwood Lane or utility extensions on Brookwood Lane, their piece would have their assessments deferred for 15 years or whenever their property was platted, whichever occurred first. And so they do have a representative here, Mr. Harold Lear, who can speak to that, but they have not submitted any plans for the property. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this annexation with the others, with A1 zoning, and recommended granting a deferral of special assessments, but that is not binding on you. I think there is an attachment to their application where they express that desire and we prepared a resolution that would express your intent to grant that. That would not actually be granted until there was an ordinance passed that created a benefit district. So it's merely stating your intent to grant a deferral at the time a benefit district is actually created. With that, I'd accept any questions about the church's application. They do have a representative here.
Questions of staff. Dean, is it anticipated that Brookwood Lane would go all the way over to Holmes Road?
Well, probably, and John, I don't know if you can jump to the East Salina Master Plan. This will be decided sooner rather than later, but the big picture conceptual plan is that Brookwood would come all the way over, but it would be a sweeping curve and there would be an intersection where Glen would come down, Brookwood would swing over, and you'd have that Holmes offset there as well. That would be determined and how this plan would necessitate all those landowners coordinating their plats together and agreeing to do it that way.
And so Brookwood runs into the west side of the roundabout?
It would, yeah. This would be Mr. Welsh's land, church, Mr. Welsh's, Brookwood.
Gotcha.
This is Holmes, Glen and Holmes.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
The rationale for that was that Holmes was going to have to be rebuilt anyway and where it got moved at that angle is the ridge line where everything to the east drains east and everything to the west drains west. It is a concept, it's an interesting concept, but if you can't get all the owners together to coordinate that, then the alternative is to bring Brookwood straight over and it just runs into a straight Holmes Road.
Thank you.
There's nothing wrong with that, it's just not real creative, so.
Are there other questions of staff?
Yeah, Dean, have we ever had an ag deferral before?
Yes.
Is that pretty common?
It's, for instance, when the First Covenant Church went in, there was a piece of ground that still has a deferral on it that Frank Norton owned at the corner of Markley and Magnolia.
Mm-hmm.
That has a deferral. There were some deferrals on South Knight Street, the KDOT slip ramps.
And with the same provisions, they also go 15 years or is each one separately or differently?
Well, it's based on when the benefit district is created.
Okay, okay.
So if they came in two years and did a benefit district, it would be 15 years from the time that it's created or when they plat.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Other questions of staff? Any public comment? If not, I'll bring it back to the Commission then.
Any two motions?
If you have some questions. Mr. Lear doesn't have any questions. Thank you.
Mayor, I move that we adopt on first reading ordinance number 09-10491, annexing the 9.23 acre tract of land into the corporate limits.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve on first reading ordinance number 09-10491, annexing 9.23 acres into the corporate city limits of Salina. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0.
Seems to me the church has been very reasonable about this, assisting their neighbors with the development of the adjacent properties. So I would move that we approve resolution 09-6603, expressing the intent to defer payment of special assessments.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 09-6603. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0.
Item 7.4, first reading ordinance number 09-10492, annexing a 36.15 acre tract of land into the corporate limits.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Commissioners. Now we are at Holmes Road. We've worked our way east and part of the reasoning for that is I told the developers for Landmark Development that we didn't really feel comfortable bringing an island annexation before you that did not address what was happening in the intervening land. So now we've been able to build a connection to the landmark site and it's important to them for two reasons. One, they are requesting that they be designated as a primary growth area for the city, which would make them eligible for special assessment financing. And they're also, by making this contiguous, by annexing the other three parcels, their request does not have to go to the County Commission for their approval. It makes you the final decision-making body. So the request we're talking about here is a 36 acre tract. We're on the northeast corner. We do not have water available in the area. There's a dead end line in Crawford and a dead end line in Brookwood. Those are going to need to be looped together via Holmes Road to get water service and fire protection. Sanitary sewer service is readily available along the east side. I think, John, you had that map of the interceptor. And the east side of this property rubs right up against the edge of the sewer interceptor so they can drain their subdivision right into that interceptor. East Dry Creek is also located there and they would plan to construct a detention pond and release their runoff into that. I think you can see by reading the minutes that there's a lot of comments about street improvements and that's certainly a challenge for the area. Crawford Street is paved, but it's not paved to a city standard and Holmes Road is not paved at all, but access to the site is generally good. We gave you kind of a lengthy supplemental report with this particular request because as we get out to the edges of the city like this, particularly on the east, as we stretch farther east, we start getting into questions about fire response times, school enrollment boundaries, police beats. Are we getting into another electric service territory, rural water districts, a number of things like that? In this particular case, we are in Westar Energy Service Territory. We're in Rural Water District Number Two. We've not found that they have any customers or service lines in this area, but that will need to be confirmed for you before final reading. We'll work with Martha Tasker on that. Emergency response here is from Station Four on Marymount Crawford, so there's a very good response time. Now that we've annexed the other three parcels, we have made this contiguous and you are the final decision-maker. And when the East Salina Master Plan came forward, there was an amendment adopted that showed this as medium density instead of low-density residential. And so if you compared all the townhome area to the shrunken area where the applicant has requested some apartment zoning, the overall density is about the same. So I think the primary issue, and we tried to point out that Flying J and Highland Meadows Hamlet at the time were really the only island annexations that we've done over a period of time. Most of the rest have been contiguous. And I think we counted up 26 subdivisions and 25 of them were in the primary growth area. This is not presently today, but the thought was to not subsidize or encourage leapfrog or jumping out development. But an argument could be made that now that this is contiguous with the city limits, it's not leapfrog development and it is sitting right next to a interceptor sewer line built by the city. So the request from the Landmark Development is annexation of this piece of property and designation of it as a primary service area so that they can be eligible for special assessment financing. I think with that, I'd be open to any questions about that question.
First question I have is Holmes Road a county road presently and does it remain a county road with these annexations?
With us owning both sides of it, our policy would be to annex it into the city but not allow access to it by the subdivisions until it were upgraded to city standards. In other words, you could access the property off Crawford but not access it until there was a piece of Holmes upgraded to reach your access point.
Where does Crawford become a county road?
Where does it become a county road?
Isn't it a county road there also?
I think it's...
Thought it was back by...
I think it may be up in half here, where the south half is county and the north half is annexed.
Dean, when we're referring to a county road, is all that roadway we're talking about just in a county roadway easement or is there actual right-of-way?
Well, the Landmark Wheatland Edition plat would dedicate right-of-way to the city and Todd Welsh's plat would dedicate right-of-way to the city. So we would get full 100-foot right-of-way for Holmes Road, which we would own.
So we would need to obtain right-of-way from the edge of Crawford east to Holmes Road at some point?
The only place where we would need to get it separately, and we've had some talks with the owner on the south, if you were wanting to extend Crawford to the east, you would have to obtain some additional right-of-way on the south from the ball fields over to Holmes. But on the north side of Crawford and all of Holmes, that would be taken care of through platting.
Then will Holmes have to be brought up to city standards before a development can take place on the property?
That has been the policy in the past, that there would be some, that that would be part of the benefit district for developing the subdivision if they wanted to... And I don't know if you have the layout, why don't you go to the Wheatland Hills one, See, their access isn't till all the way up near the north edge. So if they wanted to develop their subdivision in phases, they could probably go in and develop some of that southwest corner with just access from Crawford. And then as they built the street connection out to Holmes, that would trigger the requirement for Holmes to be upgraded.
And they're aware of that?
Planning Commission recommended that they, which has been the policy, that they file a covenant agreeing not to protest a benefit district for Holmes Road, which would mean that that would put future lot owners on notice, that they would be subject to a future benefit district.
Good. Other questions?
Same thing would apply on Mr. Welsh's side.
Are there other questions of staff?
Everything that we would annex, we would own as far as Holmes Road.
Is there any public comment? Not, I'll bring it back to the Commission for action.
Mayor, I move that we accept first reading ordinance number 09-10492, annexing a 36.15 acre tract of land into the corporate limits.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve on first reading ordinance number 09-10492, annexing 36.15 acres into the corporate limits of Salina. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0.
Item 7.5, application Z08-11, requesting approval of a change in zoning district classification from Saline County AG to planned development District R-1 and R-2.5 in the future Wheatland Hills addition. 7.5A, first reading ordinance number 09-10493.
Mr. Andrew.
This is the final item and this is a request by Landmark Development to rezone the corner there, the northeast corner of Holmes and Crawford. And they are requesting a mixed-use planned development that would have R1 single-family and one large lot set aside for multifamily housing. And the first thing that occurred was I misinterpreted their application to be requesting townhome development, which then they clarified that they were really meaning apartments. So we re-advertised the hearing and held a second hearing on the 20th of January with that clarification. And then there was quite a bit of discussion by the Planning Commission wanting comparisons of what that density compared to, which is out in the community. And so from a density standpoint of 16 dwelling units per acre, that would be pretty close to what the reserves at Prairie Glen Apartments are across from Jerry Ivy Park. That would be probably the closest equivalent to that density. So they had quite a bit of discussion about the appropriate density and how to pin that down and arrived at a somewhat of a compromise, 16 dwelling units per acre is less than what the maximum would be in an R-2.5 district. So they discussed it initially on the 16th of December. There's some minutes and comments there. At the January 20th meeting, the final discussion occurred about what the appropriate density should be and a number of comparisons were made and questions asked. And then on February 17th, they came up with a final recommendation, which would be R1 zoning for all but seven acres. And then in the corner, a zoning block that would have up to 115 apartment units with a final plan for that area coming back to the Planning Commission before a permit was In our discussions with the applicant as engineer, we did our best to emphasize the fact that from a water supply and fire flow standpoint, the southeast corner is at the edge of the system there. So looping and sizing will be important for them to get fire flow over to that far edge because if there's a loop there, it'll be at Holmes and Crawford and as you move away from there, the flows are going to diminish a little bit. But they indicated that they were aware of that and would address that when the time came to develop. The other item was that the developer would like to have the apartment zoning established so that as people come in and buy lots, they're aware of what it is zoned for and there would be no surprises. So the Planning Commission recommended the mixed R1 and R-2.5 zoning with a limitation down to 115 apartment units. And the other conditions that you see there, this would be a first reading consideration and then it would come back for second reading when they had their final plat ready.
Questions of staff?
Okay, so we, I'd like to comment on the plat. I assume...
I assume we're assuming both the preliminary plat and the zoning. I'm a little troubled by the whole concept of the apartments being over at the east end. It would seem to me, from discussions we've had on planning in general, including the hour and a half we spent before this meeting, that if there's going to be a small commercial center, even though it's potentially very small, but immediately across the street to the west, that it would make more sense to have the high-density housing right there at the corner of Holmes and Crawford. And I'm curious whether that was discussed at all. Then you also pointed out technically, from a fire protection standard, it would also be better to have the high-density housing right there at Holmes and Crawford.
I think...
Is there any possibility we can have that looked at, or was it discussed? I didn't see it in the abbreviated discussion.
I think there was so much focus on the density itself and a lot of discussion on Crawford that that point didn't come through very well. But, when you look at the east line of master plan and see commercial at the corner and townhomes remainder, that would seem to indicate that you'd be desirable to have a higher density there. But I don't think if that is something that there's not complete comfort with, there's no reason at all not to send it back to the Planning Commission to have them look at that as an option. Because the...I think their desire was to get it close to the sewer and to get it close to the detention basin, which is on that east side, because by far the most runoff from this site's going to come from the apartment area. But, I think that's their rationale. But if you were looking at it from the density standpoint or the utility standpoint, that's a valid point.
And the height, according to the notes, it's going to be a three...would it be three stories?
It could be up to 35 feet and wide.
Right. Two, two stories, three stories?
With a pitched roof. Yeah, with a pitched roof, it's going to be two stories.
Okay.
Other questions, staff? I'll bring it back to the Commission.
Just to comment to Commissioner Purney, that is something that I had not considered, to be honest, but your point does make some sense. In that case, I would move that this application be returned to the Planning Commission for reconsideration of the preliminary plat layout to put the high-density housing adjacent to Holmes Road rather than to the east side of the property.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to send this back to the Planning Commission for reconsideration. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you for the suggestion. I think it's well considered.
We'll go on to Administration.
Item 8.1, second reading ordinance number 09-10488, approving issuance of general obligation bonds for the Salina Airport Authority.
This ordinance was passed on first reading March 2nd, 2009, and since that time, there have been no comments received. Are there any public comments now? Now, I'll bring it back to the Commission.
Mayor, I'd move we adopt ordinance number 09-10488 on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance 09-10488 on second reading. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Jolka?
Aye.
Commissioner Larson?
Aye.
Commissioner Peck?
Aye.
Commissioner Purney?
Aye.
Mayor Vaneer?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0.
Item 8.2, Resolution number 09-6601, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Long MacArthur Ford for the purchase of a 2006 Ford Explorer for use by the Salina Fire Department.
Chief?
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. We have an item before you today that is really a culmination of, I guess, goodwill by one of our corporations or companies here in town, Long MacArthur Ford. We have an arson dog named Ashes, and we have had Ashes in training for about a month now. And when Long MacArthur heard that we were getting this arson dog, they came forward and said, "We would like to furnish a vehicle for you." And honestly, they put a lot of effort into it. They went out to several auctions and looked for a vehicle. And we have been really blown away and surprised at the outpouring from Petco and from our other corporations here in town to want to support this effort in the Fire Department. So, Ashes is a wonderful 15-week-old black Labrador who's being trained to operate as an arson dog, and this vehicle will allow us to be able to transport her out to the scene and around our community. She'll have a great impact in our community, not only from the standpoint of being a working dog for arson detection, but also for fire prevention activities in our schools. She will become a community icon. And so, with this item before you, to be able to have this vehicle for a dollar from Long MacArthur Ford is a wonderful, wonderful gift for us. And so, with that, I'll answer any questions that you might have on the vehicle or process and trying to move forward.
Questions, staff?
Overall, is what happens in two years, after this vehicle goes back, will we be looking for a vehicle in CIP, or we'll be go begging again?
Well, you know, honestly, we didn't have to really do any begging on this here. But to answer your question, the vehicle will go back to them. We'll sell it back to them for a dollar, and then they will put it back in our fleet. But you know, they went to quite a few auctions looking for vehicles. And I would imagine as long as Derek Lee and the rest of the people are there, and Long MacArthur is in business and a wonderful corporation here in town, that we'll have their support moving forward. As far as a crystal ball, I can't look into that in a couple of years and say that we definitely would have another vehicle for her.
But you are intending to keep the arson dog for a long period of time?
Absolutely.
That was my real question.
Absolutely.
Is this program with the dog scheduled more than two years?
Yes.
Was my question, I guess. I didn't say it right.
Ashes will be around for 10 or 12 years before she's retired. But, they do a wonderful thing in the community. And of course, you're not seeing her much right now. When I left, she was asleep, so...
Commissioners, well, I'd like to think in two years that our local economy will be great and our budget will be great. I still wouldn't see us expanding our fleet. So, if we weren't able to have a locally-sponsored vehicle, I would think that we'd just have to come up with another plan with regards to the fleet that we have to address Ashes.
Any other questions?
You know, I hope this isn't a dumb question. I understand how canines function for the Police Department. Can you summarize a little bit what exactly they would do for the Fire Department?
What Ashes' role is, is in she has several characteristics as an arson dog. One of them is that particularly the black labs have a very sensitive nose. One of their characteristics is accelerant detection. When we take samples at the scene of a fire to try to determine if a flammable liquid was used to start that fire, many times the arson investigators are hunting and searching, trying to get the best place to get a sample from. Well, arson dogs, by their very training, spot those locations, and they give the arson investigator, tells them where to sample from, and saves them a whole lot of time and a whole lot of effort. It just cuts down the time dramatically, the amount of time that they try and sample. There are other characteristics that they have and other things that they do that I'd like to talk to you in private about that, because I'd let out all of her secrets as far as how she's trained and that sort of thing. But she does do accelerant detection along with a number of other things. And she'll do other roles for us in the schools. She's going to be taught to stop, drop, and roll, and some of the public education things that we will do. She's already, when they take her down to Petco, she makes appearances down there a couple of times a month when they're doing their dog training and kids are in there and that sort of stuff. And she's kind of the head of the party down there and stuff. And really brings a lot of attention to fire safety and injury prevention. That's really what we're after about this, is to try to capture people's attention, to teach them more about fire safety when we do have fires in our community, to be able to investigate those in a more professional way. To give you some idea what we're talking about, there's only 177 departments in our country. There's 30,000 fire departments, but there is 177 who have arson dogs, and we will join that group of 177.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chief. Any public comment? Now, I'll bring it back to the Commission.
Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution number 09-6601, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Long MacArthur Ford for the purchase of a 2006 Ford Explorer for use by the Salina Fire Department.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 09-6601. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes 5-0.
Mayor, I move to recess into executive session for 15 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, and reconvene in this room at 4:58 PM.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to go into executive session and reconvene at 4:58. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. And you anticipate action after the meeting?
We do anticipate possibility of action.
Okay. We're in executive session. Meeting's back in session.
Item 8.3, Kenwood Park, 8.3B, public action.
Mr. Gage?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We have in front of you actually two items for action. One is Resolution 09-6605 that authorizes the mayor to enter into a property lease agreement for Kenwood Park with Saline County. The other is Resolution number 09-6606, which authorizes the mayor to enter into a license agreement with Saline County for use and defined term related to Kenwood Park. That's an alternate option to the proposed property lease for Saline County if you approve the lease document and they would choose not to sign it. I'll give you some background and kind of go through where we're headed with this. Since 1917, the city has owned Kenwood Park. Leases with Saline County for use portions of Parker entered into in 1929 and 1959, the latter being a 50-year lease set to expire this March 19th, so it's right around the corner. In November of 2007, Saline County ballot initiative to approve a 1/4 cent sales tax for five years to construct a new expo facility in a different location was pretty soundly defeated, with approximately 70% opposed and no voting precincts supporting the measure. That was an attempt to look at a new location and new type of facility. With the March lease deadline quickly approaching, the city's made numerous efforts to negotiate with Saline County in order to propose a lease arrangement that best meets the community's overall needs and expectations. We kind of outlined our basic objectives. We think it's...we want to make these very clear. One is to agree on a new Kenwood Park lease in a timely manner, which means prior to March 19th, and not rely on a default extension of what we believe is an outdated 50-year-old lease that does not meet community expectations for future use of the property. Not consider any lease agreement or any other property transaction agreement for Kenwood Park that directly impacts the future use of Oakdale Park and those related uses the community strongly supports. Want to provide adequate time for Saline County to determine a direction and timetable for a future expo center. We want to preserve the rights of the city as landowner to enhance the use of Kenwood Park and the bicentennial center for the overall betterment of the community and impact the county only if a better community opportunity arises. We want to allow Saline County the flexibility to get out of the lease without notice and at any time if they should choose. We want to provide adequate notice to Saline County for any partial or full lease termination by the city for purposes of reusing the property while still ensuring a minimum of three county fairs. And we...the lease that's in here does provide for a minimum of three county fairs under the most extreme situation. We want to offer city support to Saline County and the Saline County Fair Association for finding a new location for county activities and the county fair. That's something that we'd committed to earlier. One thing I'd like to emphasize is that when the public hears about this issue and discusses it, they tend to think that there's full disagreement on all issues, and that's not really the case. And as time has gone on and we've gone through negotiations and had various correspondents go back and forth, we found quite a few areas we feel that were in pretty strong agreement. And if I could, I'd like to go through those. One that's pretty obvious is that the city is the owner of the park and retains the rights of ownership. That's a pretty clear issue. It is important for both parties to finalize a lease agreement, finalize, in this case, originally both lease agreements, with Kenwood being the one that's timely today, Oakdale being out there for many, many years, prior to the expiration of the March deadline. To date, the city has not received a formal lease document for Oakdale Park from Saline County. Oakdale Park will not be used as negotiating tool for Kenwood Park. This was first acknowledged by the city by letter of legal counsel dated January 16th. It was in response to a communication from the county councillor. And that was dealing with issues. We were at that point talking about leases and deeds and many other things. Since that time, though, the county's proposed a reciprocal lease termination arrangement for the two parks in which one would...if one park...if we're under that type of lease arrangement, if one park's lease was terminated, the other would automatically be terminated. We are wanting to continue to honor the original request, which is to keep them separate. We don't believe that mixing the two makes any sense for the public. Talk about that a little bit more later. But we are in agreement with the...one aspect of that, I should say. Both parties would like to see the Tri-Vivers Fair and Rodeo, which we'll refer to as the county fair, occur this year and at least two additional years. I think it's safe to say that. We both would like to see an arrangement to extend Saline County's privilege to use Kenwood Park through August 31st, '09, for purposes of conducting this year's county fair. We believe it's necessary. That's documented by county councillor letter. Saline County acknowledges the city's need to have control in the future of Kenwood Park. That's also documented by their county councillor's letter. And finally, if the parties are unable to resolve the lease negotiations by August 31st of 2009, the county's lease for Kenwood Park would terminate, and that's directly brought, taken out of the county councillor's letter dated March 4th. So, many of the items where we find we have agreement are...were communicated to us through their county councillor based on discussions that they have had related to this topic. Now, we do have some areas of concern or disagreement. I want to be very clear about that. One is the lack of a timetable and direction from Saline County regarding the intended use of the leased portion of Kenwood Park property. There has been many opportunities over the years for public input for a future expo center, and various commissioners have addressed this issue. However, the county continues to struggle with determining if an expo center is even desired by the public, what the scale of such a facility should be, and where such a facility should be located. The Kenwood-Oakdale Park report completed by a broad-based group of community volunteers, facilitated by the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce, and publicly presented in April, clearly illustrates a concern that most of our community has with the current arrangement. I'd like to read just a portion out of there. That report stated, it says, "We believe with very strong conviction, to attract trade and commerce into Salina, we need outdoor facilities that are first-class and usable on a year-round basis. The Saline County Expo Center in its current condition no longer meets the definition of a first-class venue. Most buildings are not usable in the winter because toilets and plumbing are not winterproof and must be drained during the winter months. Animal wash areas are substandard and many other safety improvements are needed. Beyond the buildings, the part of Kenwood Park where the expo center sits has significant drainage issues." This was in page 18 of the report. Another area of disagreement or concern, probably, probably more concern, deals with Saline County's desire not to offer comments or suggestions regarding specific lease terms as proposed by the city. This is particularly difficult to understand with the lease termination date soon approaching, and because it was Saline County that invited you, the county...the city commission, to an open negotiation meeting with them that was televised in this room on February 9th. So, one would have thought that some more specific feedback on the lease would have come out of that, but it didn't. And finally, the proposition of reciprocal termination arrangement by Saline County with regards to Oakdale Park and Kenwood Park. We believe both parks are vastly different, both in physical nature, landscape character, and they're both used by the community in completely different ways. Oakdale Park is very shaded, well-maintained, and used for both active and passive park uses, including the Smoky Hill River Festival. The portion of Kenwood Park currently occupied by Saline County includes multiple expo center support buildings, dirt paving, and livestock areas. The city does not believe that an arrangement in which the termination of the lease for one park should cause the immediate termination of the other. This approach does not take into consideration the park's differences and public expectations, and seems to be contradictory to a community needs approach to negotiations." We have attached to this report two documents. One is a Kenwood Park lease agreement. It's very similar to one that we've talked about in the past. Basically, it provides for the leased unauthorized used areas, and those are shown on an enclosed map, a term of 10 years with an anniversary date that comes back to the... A term of 10 years with an anniversary date that comes back to the September 1st. This means that in the, whatever the last year might be, we always get through the county fair, which we thought was a very important thing. Provides early termination authority to Slayne County for any purpose and with no notice to the city. So if they want to ever get out of it, they can without any notice to us. It's simple action by them. Provides early termination authority to the city, but only for specific purposes. This is in contrast to a year-to-year arrangement, such as where we are right now in Oakdale Park. And what we proposed to the county, the, the specific purposes which would prompt us to provide any form of early termination would be, one, a public-private development of a hotel convention facility with a one-year notice and lease alternatives that may result in partial termination or no termination at all. So there's a lot of options, including our obligation to commit to work with whomever might be developing or want to develop that to preserve the county facilities. These include options for Slayne County to make also aesthetic improvements to conform to a first-class look, which is important, and the full commitment by the city to make an effort to work also with them in trying to figure out, as I mentioned before, a way for the county to stay. This option allows the city to do a couple of things with regards to developing that area. One, and this is, and this is really important for the public to understand, and these are, these are big issues. One, to complement the current bicentennial center use that's there. So we're not talking about some other type of development. We're talking about complementing, complementing the, the arena and the convention facilities that we already have in place. And the reason for that is because we want to provide the capability to hold convention and conference events that no community facility can currently hold and so that we can attract larger statewide-scale events. We cannot attract those today because we do not have the facilities anywhere in town. So we're not looking at really a form of a competing service. We're looking at greatly broadening the service. And if we can do that, if we can find a way, then we believe that the hotel motel use throughout the community, throughout the whole community will increase and the community will benefit from that. So we simply want that as an opportunity in the lease in case that should occur. We also want to preserve the right as the owner of the property to develop it publicly if we should choose. And we put a threshold of a minimum of $1 million that would have to be invested. And with this, a two-year notice with some similar lease alternatives for Slayne County. The other thing I'd like to emphasize, we've talked about the, the notices of one year for private and two-year for public. But we also include in here a deferred timeline for providing any termination notice of one year. This means the earliest termination relocation date set for Slayne County would be August 31st of 2011 under the public-private development scenario and August 31st of 2012 under the purely public scenario. In addition, this provision allows for a minimum of three consecutive county fairs under the public-private development scenario and four consecutive public, or county fairs under the purely public scenario. So at a minimum, under the most restrictive circumstances whatsoever under the lease we're proposing to Slayne County, Slayne County and the Fair Association would be able to conduct at least three consecutive fairs. And if, if, if it was a public, a pure public reason that we would provide notice, at least four fairs. Depending on who you talk to, some might believe that there really isn't development demand to have any type of convention hotel development with the bicentennial center. And I've heard comments of that. And so my thought would be is if that's the case, then the risk of Slayne County being provided notice and asked to leave is minimized even more. So it, to me, it makes the lease even that much more palatable. We've also attached a Kenwood Park license agreement. And this is a slightly different tool than you've seen in the past, and there's a reason for it. We did mention earlier, the newly proposed lease agreement for Slayne County includes a provision that, that will preserve at least three county fairs regardless of any termination notice. However, with the current Kenwood Park lease expiring on March 19th, it's the 19th of this month, a choice by Slayne County not to sign the proposed lease that you provide them would put this year's county fair in jeopardy. Since the city is committed to, to the Slayne County Fair Association and the county citizens that this year's county fair would occur, we have proposed a stopgap measure in the form of a license agreement. The license agreement would provide a legal means other than a lease for Slayne County to occupy the same portion of property at Kenwood Park that they have today through the 31st of, August 31st of this year. Under this option, the lease would still expire on March 19th. There would be no lease extensions of any kind that could be negotiated between the parties once this occurs. But what this would do is it would preserve the ability for Slayne County to be on the property long enough to have this year's fair and meet our, our commitment to do that. Again, this is only if they should choose not to sign the lease, which would allow for a minimum of three or possibly four fairs at the minimum. We believe this does conform with our strategic plan. Goal number two is very specific. It says, "The city will create a uniformly managed and master-planned Kenwood Park/Oakdale Park destination area featuring recreation, tourism, entertainment, hotel lodging, surrounding, mixed-use development, green space, and a direct linkage to downtown." The strategic plan goal is really a primary basis for the negotiations we've had with Slayne County for this Kenwood Park lease. This goal was publicly adopted in October of 2006. So we've had it in place for nearly two and a half years. As a fiscal note, at this point, there's really not a direct fiscal impact to the city on this lease arrangement. We have, again, two actions for the city commission to consider. We do believe that the proposed lease terms that we have do adequately preserve the city's future ability to use this portion of Kenwood Park for use which better serves the interests of all of Slayne County citizens. We also believe, though, that addresses Slayne County's decision timetable needs for a future expo center. I guess it comes down to the point that says, how long should we allow, how long should anyone need to make a decision as to where they want to go and, and what they want to develop at a different location? And this would allow roughly a minimum of two and a half years and take them through at least three county fairs in order to do that. So we think it does meet that expectation. As a result, staff is recommending the adoption of these separate actions in order to provide Slayne County with two options for consideration. These action are to adopt the Resolution 09-6605, which authorizes the mayor to enter into a property lease agreement for Kenwood Park with Slayne County, and Action Number Two, which is Resolution Number 09-6606, that authorizes the mayor to enter into a license agreement with Slayne County for prescribed use and defined term related to Kenwood Park. And again, we're asking the city commission to look at both of these on the assumption, or on the possibility that Slayne County may possibly not sign the lease that would preserve a fair this year. Therefore, the license agreement would ensure that there is a fair this year. And that's why it's being proposed. I would be happy to take any questions that you have. We also have Greg Dinks in the city's legal counsel, who can take questions, maybe more specifically, about the lease or the license agreement.
Questions of staff?
Just so I'm clear on a couple of things. Number one, you mentioned our strategic plan. And the language for the, for that part of town, Kenwood/Oakdale Park area, was adopted in October of 2006, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Secondly, under the lease, under the license agreement, if that, if the lease expires on March 19th and the license agreement is signed and becomes the, the ruling document, there can be no lease extensions of any kind negotiated between the county or the city, correct?
Yes. I'll defer that to legal counsel. I believe that's correct because the lease would terminate officially March 19th.
Yes, the, that scenario would anticipate that the lease would expire by its own terms on March 19th. There would then be actually two scenarios occurring simultaneously. You would have the ability of the county to occupy the area that they normally have occupied for purposes of conducting the fair. And the way the language is now, they would be able to operate, use the facilities generally as they have under that license agreement from the March 19th expiration of the current lease through August 31st. So that would be all there is in terms of rights of occupancy for use of the area. The other process that is, would be occurring concurrently is under the 1959 lease, there is provision for the county to remove any buildings that they might choose to remove. The license agreement, well, you have the license agreement in place. We've also, in the resolution that authorizes the license agreement, provides direction to me to notify the county that they have until the end of the year, until December 31st, to remove those buildings that they might choose to. Those are two separate processes. Again, the lease terminates for purposes of occupancy, but we do have the matter of their ability to go in and remove buildings to the extent necessary. We assume that they, if they signed the license agreement, would obviously not want to remove buildings during that initial phase and felt that allowing them through the end of the year to remove those buildings was consistent with earlier indications we had from the county as to their desired timeframe for any removal of buildings. If they would not choose to sign the license agreement or the new lease, such that the current lease simply expires, they would then have through the end of the year to remove whatever buildings they might choose.
Thank you. Other questions of staff?
Mayor, the other thing, just real quick, that I failed to mention is that the lease provision also says that the city would work with Slayne County on finding another location. Don't, maybe I hit that, I'm not sure I did. But I think that's important, too, because we've, we've committed staff-wise to doing that, and we felt it's important to assist them with that, and we would continue to do that regardless of the situation. So we're there to help them as a resource as well. Just want to make sure that you're aware of that.
Under the dates that you have on the blue sheet, August 31, 2011, August 31, 2012, those dates are if something were to happen in the very near future before September 1 of 2009, is that correct?
That is correct.
So if nothing happens between now and September of 2009, then there is no, the county isn't under the gun as they've indicated us they feel that they're under the gun. Is that correct?
I think that's correct. I, I think a lot of it has to do with the perspective of how much demand is there to develop the property in this way. And if there's not a lot of private demand to do that, and we'd like to utilize the property better, we'd like to make that happen. But if we find out in the end there really isn't a lot of private demand, then there's really not a lot of pressure whatsoever on Slayne County.
I guess my point is, there have been a couple articles in the newspaper that says that it's a one-year and you're gone. And the point I'm trying to make is that it's at least 2011, and that's if something happened immediately, or 2012 under a public, public-private, or a public development situation. So I want that point to be made very clear that, that there's at least two and a half years and three and a half years under different scenarios that the, the county could anticipate their planning process.
Yeah, that's correct. That's, those are the shortest possible timeframes in here, which means that, again, the minimum time that they would have, there would be two and a half, not a year, but two and a half, roughly two and a half years or possibly three and a half years. And that is if, you're right, if, if a developer came to us today and said, "We're ready to work with you to do something," that's the quickest timeline that's in the lease.
Okay, thank you.
Just to dovetail into that, that, again, minimally, we, we talk in terms of years, but in terms of county fairs, minimally, that's three years for private development, and, excuse me, three fairs for private development and four fairs for public development at the very minimum.
Right, yeah. For those who count fairs, where it's easier to keep track of fairs rather than years, a minimum of three fairs under any circumstance or possibly four even. And those are minimums. Again, there could be 10 fairs in a row.
Other questions of staff? Is there any public comment?
Gary Swartzner, 528 South College. Just a real obvious question. The answer is obvious, I think. If it's not obvious, tell me. There's absolutely no chance for the county to consider bulldozing down and rebuilding the existing structure, is that correct?
I don't know that there's anything that would prohibit them from doing that, but I think what they would have to do is they would have to weigh that investment under the current lease. You know, the other thing I would say, too, let's say that, that they spend some time and they think about what they want to have there, and they come back with a totally different concept and they place that in front of us. I certainly think the city would continue to look at that as we always do. So anything that changes the place where we are today is going to be worth looking at in the future. We'd be open to looking at that.
The lease cannot expire.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if they want to do that, they've got to March 19th or else sign the lease agreement.
Okay. So the obvious is if, if they just want to deadpan the whole issue, they're flat-ass out of luck when it comes to any consideration whatsoever of rebuilding anything there. And I think there are some smart people on the county commission. I just want to make sure that they're not avoiding the real issue here unless there's a great public outcry that we have this fabulous old egg hall and we want to spend $3 million to refurbish that. That would have to come under the agreement of a lease. I mean, they would have to sign on for a lease.
The building is owned by the county, so that's, that's going to be the county's option. What we're saying is that if, if there is no lease agreement in place by March 19th, then, you know,
All bets are off.
All bets are off.
If, if I may, Mayor, it does lead to a possibly significant point. And that is, and one I, maybe we should be sure you all are in agreement with, that if the county were to sign the lease as proposed, they have exclusive control of that area. And they can demolish, reconstruct, as they see fit. We had consciously expected that we didn't necessarily need or, you know, if it's theirs and, and they lease it, they can demolish, reconstruct, whatever. They have that latitude during, under a new lease, under the new lease as proposed.
I understand.
Yeah. And it also provides for a partial termination. So for example, you know, maybe there's a, maybe there's a public opportunity and we want to do something with the property, or it could be private, but they say, if they want to fix up the facade and make them look first-class, we're okay with leaving them. But we still need, there's just a little section of property we would still need to have in order to do, put that development together. This lease provides that it's not an all-or-nothing situation, that there is an in-between in there. And we, we did that on purpose, provide both the city and the county with options and hopefully options that we could work through with any development opportunity.
So, so if their gesture is one of bad faith, we're going to stick it to the city because we don't like you, that's not going to be a working deal. Anything, the potential of something done in good faith on their part in collaboration with the city would have some future. If it's not done with that tenor, it ain't going to happen. I think they already understand this. But, but I think that, I appreciate you wanting precise clarity on this thing. There's no use beating around the bush because this is a pretty important issue.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Slight variation of what Gary suggested and what was just discussed and one of the few things we didn't discuss in any executive sessions, theoretically at least, the way I understand this lease. If the county and/or associated agencies wanted to make a dynamic funded proposal to redevelop the park, that could be submitted to the city under this lease and that could become the public or private project that ultimately terminates the, the new 10-year lease.
It could, but the city would still have the right.
To approve it.
Or to, if someone else came in.
Yeah. I think, Commissioner, that, that would prompt us, if need be, wanting to relook at the lease altogether. The, the good example may be Wichita and Sedgwick County with regards to an arena downtown. It was first a Wichita project, and there were some issues. They turned around and, and both parties ended up believing it was best to be a Sedgwick County project. From what I can tell, both parties are pretty happy, and they're working through the details of the implications of all that. So, yeah, if by chance the county had worked with someone and they wanted to bring a developer, and they're wanting to fit right into the plan we've talked about here, if it didn't fit into the lease we have, it sure would be worth taking a close look at, just like any proposal would.
No more public comment. I would bring it back to the commission for action.
I'd like to make a couple comments. I'm, of course, going to support the proposal. I want to just make a couple points clear, at least for me. The city's interest in this whole matter, to me, all along has been to have control of the land should another opportunity come up. Clearly, we don't have one of those at the moment. That's why we're guaranteeing at least, a minimum of three more fairs. So the typical citizen was, is probably, has probably been asking all this time, why has it been so difficult? To me, the whole scenario just shows the folly of having two local government entities that represent nearly the same group of people having to haggle over this. That might have worked, you know, back in the 19th century when Gibson, Smol, and Brookville, Salina were all about the same size, but things have changed. And we're in the 21st century now, and I want to make it clear that those comments are criticisms of the system and not any of the individuals or dedicated employees of the county. I hope the county commissioners will look at this agreement as serving everybody's interests. They're guaranteed at least three more fairs there, possibly many more, and we retain our ability to use the land for other purposes if an opportunity would come up. I also, in conclusion, also hope that the county would recognize the 21st century reality regarding Oakdale. We can't turn the clock back 50 or 75 years there. And so it's been kind of difficult, the way they've kind of gone back and forth on reciprocity of this, but I hope they will take that comment into mind.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the commission.
Okay, so two, two separate actions here, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I'd move we approve Resolution Number 09-6605, authorizing the mayor to enter into a property lease agreement for Kenwood Park with Saline County. Second?
I may, Mayor, just to, I'm sorry, semantics here, but it's important in this case, the reference to authorizing the mayor, we're in a little different scenario than we normally are, for the reason that we are, in the time is of the essence, authorizing both actions. So in each case, you will actually be approving the documents, or adopting, simply adopting the resolution may be the, the best approach, because you're approving the document, authorizing that both be delivered to the county clerk for consideration by the Board of County Commissioners, and they will have the choice of whether they enter into the new lease, or whether they prefer to allow the current lease to expire and use the, the license agreement. So we're not, at this moment, actually authorizing you to execute because that would be a, we'd have conflicting authorizations there, if that hopefully made some sense.
So we just need a motion to adopt the resolution?
That is probably the simplest.
And we still need two motions?
Still need two motions. That would be best, I think.
Okay.
Mayor, I reword that, then. I, I move that we simply adopt Resolution Number 09-6605.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 09-6605. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, 5-0.
Mayor Vaneer, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 09-6606, which is the license agreement.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 09-6606. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, 5-0. And we have no other business, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second?
Moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes, 5-0. We're adjourned.
Okay.